Evening, everyone. We're going to reconvene the meeting. Evelyn, can I have roll call, please?
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Dia Slocum.
Present. Moving on to item four point two, report out of closed session from December seven, two thousand and twenty-two, the board met with the superintendent and gave him his evaluation for the years two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. Welcome, everybody. If you'd like to speak to the board, if you're here, please complete a card. If you're at home, please fill out the Google Doc. Si necesitas traducción, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presiona el número ocho tres siete sete cero cuatro uno y la tecla de números para contraseñas. Gracias. If you're speaking on the consent items, please let us know so that we can pull them to action because they're all voted at once. We don't go through it one by one. And with that, do I have any changes or modifications to the agenda this evening?
Got two groups of proposals. One is I'd like to move all of the second reading and approvals, except for the bylaw one that we discussed last time. So that's thirteen point six and through thirteen point ten and move those to consent. And then I think we could also move the measure U addendums unless people have comments on that. That's thirteen point four and thirteen point five. So that would be thirteen point four through thirteen point ten.
Is everyone okay with this? Okay? Any other changes to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, can I have a motion to move the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Evelyn? Oh, I forgot, we're here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think seeing her at home confused me. Hey. Do we have any oral communication this evening?
No oral communication.
Okay, none in person as well? Moving right along to item nine, school community reports, citizens' measure U oversight committee for years by report two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Evening, members of the board. For this report, we were expecting one or two members from the citizens' major U oversight committee who are not in attendance at this point. I would suggest that we table this and bring this back at the meeting next Wednesday on December fourteenth.
And we will do that, move it to next week. Moving on to item ten, bond program consent items. Can I have a motion to move those items, please?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven, bond program action items. Let's see, we have one, eleven point one, adoption of futility resolution nineteen, approval of new classroom building, modernization and site work landscaping project bid package F, change order number six with Scapes Inks at Garfield. Any comments or questions? Can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Okay, moving to the consent items, which includes action items thirteen point four to thirteen point ten. Can I have a motion to move them?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. A thirteen point one, recommendation regarding approval of personnel increase.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So this is an increase, but it's not an increase for the full school year. What is going to occur is that Ms. Liz Wolf will be retiring at the end of this school year, who we will miss very much. And so what we, what I am recommending, I should say, is to have this position do some overlap work with Liz while she's still here. So the full amount that you see here is a full salary, but it would be half that because that person hopefully would start sometime during the year, so maybe even less than that, and would get the lay of the land, understand what it takes to be, at this point in time, the director of educational services. But as when Liz departs on her retirement and all her travels, this person will then slip into hopefully the assistant superintendent for ed services. So it's not that we're adding in. It seems like, yes, for a period of time, we're adding someone at half the salary or maybe even more than that. But when comes July one, this position will be laid off, actually be laid off at the end of the school year, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. Are there any questions in regard to that?
None.
Can we just say thanks, Liz, for staying until the end of the year and helping this position be fulfilled and sort of get trained up? It's, you know, it's obviously very sad to hear for us, for you. Hopefully, it's a good, good position. But, um, but thank you, you know, it's, it's nice to have that overlap period and that transition period and, and I'm sure that you'll make sure that the district is still in good hands and that you're going to leave big shoes to fill, but I'm sure that you're going to help ensure that they're filled with the right person.
Couldn't have said it better.
Perfect.
Yes.
And then, as you know, she can always come back and help if she still desires. That's what we've been told, right, Wendy?
Thank you. Thank you, John, also for planning that session planning. I think that's very important, especially in a position like Liz and with all those forms you have to fill out. So with that, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thirteen point two, recommendation regarding approval of variable term waiver.
Good evening. I'm bringing this item to you tonight for one of our amazing Spain teachers. We have an incredible group of teachers from Spain that have come over to fill positions in our bilingual programs. And this particular individual just needs a little bit more time. There's quite a few requirements with these, this type of program. And so that is why the timeliness of this is a little off in December, but we're actually seeking a little bit more time for this individual.
Any comments or questions? Now, can I have a motion to move this item?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thirteen point three, recommendation regarding approval of first amendment to the agreement between Redwood City School District and the National Urban Alliance.
So this is an amendment. It's to increase it by seven thousand dollars. And what, I know it's, it's a small amount, but it was not part of that original contract that we had first. And there were a couple, there was another school that was going to do some trainings. But they had their own contract, but at that time, don't have the money for the additional training. So we're going to take seven thousand dollars from wonderful Quan Foundation to go through so they can have the trainings. And thank you, Cecilia, for bringing this to my attention. Because Cecilia had a question because she thought, you know, because the school was not, you can explain it if you'd like.
Yeah, so my question had been on the original contract, Henry Ford was the school listed, and so on the rationale for this one, and I'm sorry, I don't have it just right now on.
It's.
It was Adelante Selby. And so I was just wondering if something, if it was an oversight or something that needed to change. So he explained that it was just the additional training. So, thank you.
And, and it's being paid for out of the foundation as opposed to the contract that Adelante Selby had with thankfully.
Any comments or questions?
I mean, just once again, thank you to the Quan Foundation for their supporting, their continued ongoing support of the Redwood City School District.
Yeah. And to John for keeping that relationship. Yeah. No further comments or questions? Can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. On to thirteen point one one, recommendation, well, thirteen eleven, recommendation regarding second reading and approval of board bylaw ninety-one zero zero organization.
Thank you. So thank you for the time tonight. I think we need one more conversation regarding this board bylaw. It was discussed at the November sixteenth meeting and a suggestion was made by trustee McAvoy. And that information was sent out again. As you know, the second reading is a clean copy of what the new suggestions are. So you won't see strike through and bold as we do in the first, and that's, that's the difference between the side by side comparison that can be done between the first and the second reading. However, I do believe that there is further discussion to be had, and what I'm hoping will be final minor edits for this board bylaw. And I believe trustee Marquez had a few additions, which is great. So, Elisa, did you want to start the conversation regarding tonight?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, I think I was comfortable with what it, oh.
Yeah, I would just say I was comfortable with what, so Janet and I sit on the policy committee, which is probably why you're asking me, and then I got into you because I wasn't sure what you had sent me earlier today. So I, I'm comfortable with what's presented in the board package tonight when I read it through. And I'm certainly open to additional comments. So I don't know, maybe it makes sense for Cecilia to try, because I don't. I, I think what you had sent me today, the problem was there was some, like, periods or missed, there was a few things missing out of that. So I don't know if that's what we're working off of or if we want to work off of this. Are they super minor tweaks or would it be better?
It's, I mean, somewhat.
Okay.
Do you want me to list them? How, how'd you guys want to go?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I feel like, I think it was complicated enough last time, so I don't know if we want to try to do that here or if we want to just get a clean copy with Cecilia's comments and bring it back. I mean, I think our current policy still sort of says what it says. I mean, I think we're all prepared to do the rotation next week. So I don't know if there's any urgency to spend a bunch of time where it might be complicated. I mean, i- if it was just a couple of words, and I would just say, let's try to plug them in, but if it starts to move things around. Personally, I'd rather take the copy we last agreed to, which I think is in the board package, and then maybe just try to bold and strike through that or whatever, you know, is the easiest for the whole board to review.
Do you have a lot of changes or can you just quickly read?
I mean, okay, so I'll tell you guys the, the changes. For number one, under assign the following officers to rotation. I thought that if we took out governing board for the representative to the Samatail Community Committee on Schools Organization, just because the next one over, we don't see governing board liaison to the California School Board Association is again.
So just say representative.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's small enough.
And then after item six, the very first paragraph, at the annual organization meeting, the Board of Education shall rotate so that each, and then I put incumbent, assumes the next higher position to the officer rotation order and then new language as listed above before placing any newly elected or appointed board member. And then everything else is the same example. And then strike through where it says the elected board member who was a liaison to the CSBA and the SMC SBA or, and then the new word would be the precedent. And then strike through and the case of the newly elected board member becomes a governing board prep, same thing. So the only new words would be again incumbent listed as above and then the precedent. And then on the school district organization, after the number four, the new language would be or the next higher position and the number three. And then the other, other correction was that the bylaw was revised in February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one, rather than what was on the impacted, which was March of two thousand and sixteen.
So a comment on that, though, not, not everybody is necessarily an incumbent. So I wouldn't add that word. You could say that each member assumes the next higher position. So, because not everybody was in an election that year.
Okay.
What I might recommend is maybe we need to bring it back to the board policy committee and just try to clean it up. So it's a clean copy and everybody has a chance to look at it and because it, it's just complicated enough that a few words here and there could be different. So I would like to take your suggestions, bring it back, let's look at it. It feels hard for me to sort of, I, I don't know that we can approve that tonight.
No, I actually don't want to approve it tonight, too, because I had a question that I feel like we need to talk about, and it's in a very last sentence. And it reads, if there is more than one new board member elected or appointed, there will be a lottery to determine the order of filling the board positions. The previous board policy stated that if there is more than one new board member elected, they would be seated according to their ranking position in the election, which I think we should keep that. It's the multiple appointed members. There would be a lottery because there was no election.
I think the problem is now we're doing these area district wide ones, so everybody's going to have a different vote total, but it's a different percentage of voters.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah.
Right. So the issue is going to be one, your area, and we know that different areas have different numbers of voters. Yeah, so that's the problem.
Yep.
Yep, that's the problem. If we were, yeah.
Yeah.
At large, then it would make sense, yeah.
So then the, the language as written is appropriate for that sentiment. Okay. So we do have our policy committee next week.
Yeah.
And then our, our board meeting is the week we come, after we come back, January eleventh. I think we could put that as top of the agenda.
There's no rush because we're going to be rotating before we move into the agenda tomorrow, next week.
True. Mm-hmm. Good point.
Okay. Are you okay with that to say? Because I would like to look at your language and think about it and. Perfect.
I'm totally fine. Can you send us your language? We can see what you're talking about.
Yes.
I have that ready for everybody and the item I sent.
Which brings us to fourteen point one, report from board members and superintendent.
Cecilia?
So last week I attended the logo redesign committee, and we got some good work done there. I'm looking forward to our upcoming meeting. I think it's next week. And I attended the chamber education committee meeting today. It was in my car, so I didn't get to really take notes, but there was some interesting stuff from Joan Dentler from Senator Josh Becker's office. And she talked about his focus on special, special education funding and pushing for more money from the state for that, particularly for the students that are in NPS placements because that's such a burden on the districts. And she mentioned, and this was in, I think, an Edsource article, but that, I think it was in San Francisco, there was a parcel tax that was a citizen-led initiative. So it was not put on the ballot by the school board, but when it's a citizen-led initiative, they only need a fifty-five percent to pass, whereas we need two thirds if the board puts it on there. So that's for parcel taxes, which I thought was really interesting. And hopefully some of our audience members can, uh, can look into that. And then they talked about, is it Prop twenty-eight, the arts and music funding? I didn't have a lot of notes on that, but she did mention that that money does go to both LCFF and basic aid. And it'd be about one percent, I think, of budget. So that's all I have. That was the notes I took in my head.
And the other piece was, one of the things was in regard to those of us who are community funded or basic aid, that Josh, Mr. Becker is moving forward to see if we can also get the TK teachers as part of the funding, whereas right now we don't have that. That comes out of unrestricted general fund dollars. So that was, that was another one.
So Senator Becker is going to work on that.
Yes.
That would be great because he's hearing loud and clear. Yeah.
Because he's hearing loud and clear from districts in Samatail County and Santa Clara County where he represents, because there's a lot of basic aid districts.
Right.
That's good. Oh, one more thing on Senator Becker, too, is he has his, it ought to be a law open right now. So if anybody has something that they think needs to be a law and wants him to, to push, you can go to his website and make a suggestion there.
Just like Semidium before, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Cecilia, get to.
No, nothing to report.
Mike?
I'll start with Happy Inclusive Schools Week, everybody. We're three days in. So I did, I attended the measure U oversight committee. I could tell you all about it, but it sounds like we're going to have the report next week. It was, you know, the report was approved at the meeting. The one thing I wanted to say is that the chair, Janet Borgans, who might have been the one that presented here, it is a masterclass in running a public meeting, watching her get through that agenda and sort of run through it. I just really was, it was, that was impressive. There's a lot, lot more to report, but I'll probably save it for the next report to talk about the, when we get through the five-year report.
Okay, so let's see. Why don't I start with last week? I was at, I was in San Diego for CSBA, and of course I had board director meetings, delegate assembly, and then the annual conference and just a lot of really good conversations. And I've already been connecting with Dr. Baker and a few other folks about that. But one of the, one of the sessions that I went to, and I think actually David went to it as well, was on cybersecurity. And the main point of that was it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and so we need to be fully prepared. So I know we've already had some conversation with Dr. Baker about what all is going on, and I'm hoping that we can have a closed session on that to really make sure that our district is well-prepared. And I know David has some expertise in that as well. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. And it was pretty scary to hear about what's happened to some school districts out there. So we want to be fully prepared and ready to go for the win, and then, of course, try to minimize anything that might happen there. So that was one of the more interesting sessions. I did want to also mention one of the, the first general session speaker, Brandon P. Fleming, who has a book, Miseducated, which I have not read, but I will plan on reading. Pretty amazing story, just his own personal story, but the message there was sort of leading with love. And I also thought that a lot of his messaging was very much aligned with our National Urban Alliance work in terms of having, you know, high expectations and believing in every student, and every student can achieve at very high levels. And that was basically the theme of the whole talk. But if, I don't know if we have to pay for it or not, but I would recommend that's the one general session maybe to watch. The other things were interesting, but I don't know, you know, everybody's very busy, so I don't know if you have time to do all of that. Um, and then I have a few things that I'm going to be passing on to staff and to Dr. Baker of sessions that I went to. Let's see. Um, oh, and I did, I did lead a session, gave a session on saving money while integrating climate action and work-based learning, and that was mostly through the nonprofit I'm involved with, and it's more directed at high schools and unified, so not as much related to us. But there are some nuggets of things there that I thought I would share at some point, and maybe, you know, we can agendize that later. Let's see, I went to Jackie Spears' celebration of forty years of service, and she's starting a new foundation that'll be dedicated to Samatail County and women and children. And she's raising money for this foundation, and she really wants to focus on better outcomes for women and children in Samatail County. And the reason I bring this up is I could easily see us benefiting from this down the road. And then at that event, I did talk to Congressman Kevin Mullen and congratulated him. And also, we've made an agreement that a few of us are going to meet with him to kind of bring him up to speed on federal education issues. And he did express special education as one thing that he knows he needs to help with. So I think between maybe Senator Josh Becker and Congressman Kevin Mullin, maybe we could finally get a little movement on that, which would be great. Let's see, I did meet with a community member regarding questions around bond measures and consolidation of school districts and some other cost-saving measures. And then finally, I did go to the Sequoia High School Dream Club Dinner, which was fabulous. I know many of you have been to that in the past. And several of our former students were there speaking and participating in that, and it was just completely inspirational. Those students are amazing, their level of resilience and just ambition and passion for what they're doing. Okay, thanks.
Well, I had the privilege of visiting Garfield, the new facility, for the first time last Thursday. It was raining, but it was still beautiful. And the children were very happy. I love seeing them in the classroom and seeing them in the cafeterias, and they were playing PE inside the, the MUB. So that was kind of fun. I saw all the library staff, and the new librarian has had all these boxes of books that she got from the San Francisco Library, from books that they've deselected. Apparently, they have this huge warehouse. So she brought lots of new books for them to take. So that was really good to see. They were working on their catalog and training. So it was really fun. I also stopped and checked around Hoover School and the preschool and saw where they cut the fence, you know, before and just getting ready for our meeting tomorrow with the city to see what they've done and what needs to be done there. So and that's all I have, John.
I think everything was already mentioned. The only thing that I wanted to mention is that Liz put together a really great template for the board presentations, and if there's anything that you want different on there, please get it back to us so we can change it, so she can change it, and we'll be ready to go and come back in January.
Did we, did we get any correspondence? I think I got an email about extending the time to report the budget to the county.
Yeah.
Actually, just the audit. We'll be writing the audit to the board of the second meeting in January.
Thank you. I just got it today. Then I also got some correspondence on the shortage of substitutes, both in teachers and special ed paraprofessionals and adding hours to the library staff positions at some sites. And that's all I have for that. Uh, let's see. Sixteen point one, possible other business suggested items for future agendas. None. Excellent. And seven.
I'm sorry, I have one. It's going to be an offsite that some of us have been talking about in our meetings, and we're hoping to do that on January twentieth. It's a Friday at nine thirty, and that is for us to look at not only our. not only our, to review our L cap goals, but at the same time, what I want to present to the board is how we're going to plan our board meeting moving forward for the remainder of this school year and then to start looking at the next school year. And also strategic directions for the next three years.
How long are you thinking that's going to be?
I was hoping that it would, would be over by three.
Okay.
And we were hoping to start at nine thirty because I know of your schedule.
Yeah, that works. I was just thinking I need to make pickup plans.
Okay.
So, that's fine.
And I'm going to see if Sarah can get me the CCI building. Who know, you know, she's really good with, I mean, has a great connection there. And if, if so, we would be at CCI. If not, we can always be here. It's going to be, it will be open. I don't know how many people will, you know, even come, but it definitely will be an open meeting. There may be one section that'll be closed, but I still have to decide on that and talk to our attorney about it.
Geez, so I can come, huh? That's right, I know.
And, and then just remember, we start at six thirty next week. So we have it because we are definitely celebrating, you know, you know. Celebrate Maria. David starts, you know, after that, and then with rotation. But we'll be starting at six thirty and then we'll take a bit of a break because we're going to, remember the wonderful days of the cake? We're going to do that again.
Okay, so are there any changes to the board meeting calendar besides the ones you mentioned? Nope. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Aye. Great.
And nobody leave until I get this, the signatures that Ellen, that not Evelyn needs. Okay, hopefully I've got this right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn, for being with us. I hope you're feeling better.
I am.